I need a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and I need a motion to approve the claims properly signed. I need a motion to approve the claims properly signed.
All in favor?
We have a lot on our agenda this evening, so you guys that are present need to bear with us, and thank you all for being here.
Today's date, September 12th, 2011, and it's 7:05 PM at the Maritz-Linden City Hall. If you can't hear me, please let me know, and I'll try and project a little bit more. The meeting was advertised in compliance with the Indiana Code IC 5-3-1, and the meeting was advertised in the Green County Daily World on September 1st of 2011. The purpose of the meeting is to provide citizens the opportunity to express their views on community development and housing activities, past community development and housing needs, and the proposed project, which consists of obtaining funds to conduct a study for the park plan. You're looking at specifically establishing the guidelines and policies to help the growth and development of the community facilities, which include three areas inside the city limits, and one 605-acre reclaimed mining area owned by the city but located just outside the contiguous city boundaries. The estimated total cost of the project was $34,350, and the grant amount received was $30,000, and the local match provided by the city was $4,350. It's a 10 percent match on the project. It came from the city's park funds, and the costs include the completion of a comprehensive plan by Christopher Burke Engineering Firm, and also for the administration of the grant as well, and initiating the environmental review with the appropriate agencies by SIDC. No displacement will occur as a result of the project, so no one's getting kicked out of their home because of this plan. And at this time, we're going to turn it over to Christopher Burke Engineer.
This is Sheila McInley, and she is with Christopher Burke, and she's got a slide presentation that will help explain some of what some folks have been working pretty hard on here. Sorry to ask you, but thank you very much for having me this evening. I'm going to give a powerpoint presentation, just an overview of the master plan, what we've been working on. So what we're going to talk about is the purpose of the master plan, the planning process that we went through, the needs analysis, the results from that, the priority projects that were identified. We're going to talk a little bit about sustainable parks, and then what are the next steps to get this approved and adopted locally. So the purpose of the master plan is this is really necessary to guide growth and development for the city's park system. It's a great opportunity to examine the parks and the park system, to look at what your needs are, the community needs, where there may be some deficiencies, to analyze user needs, what age is the general population, what are their needs, and to identify and prioritize improvements to facilities and your park programs. And the Department of Natural Resources does require a five-year update of this plan to keep it current and to make you eligible for the very valuable grants. Okay, so the parks that we talked about, there's up in the Conservation Club area to the north of the city, there's Sunset Park, and then the Conservation Club property, Humphreys Park, sort of in the center of town, Oak Grove Park out to the west side, and then the Phil Harris Golf Course. So those are the areas that we focused on for this plan. And then in addition to that, you sit smack dab in the middle of this tremendous resource, natural resource of these wonderful park amenities. So not only do you have these great parks in your community, but you have all of these great regional parks that you can draw on as well. So there's huge economic and recreational potential here, so you're in a great spot. So the planning process, it was a 10-month planning process. It was led by a very talented planning team, very dedicated people, many of them in the room, and I'm glad to see familiar faces. These folks worked very hard to get through quite a bit of information, and maybe I should give them all red pens when I give them the full draft of the plan, so they can mark it up and make it even better. We had input from focus groups, and then we had input from a park survey, and then input tonight from this public presentation if there's additional comments. All right, so the needs analysis, again, this was information that's gathered from the planning team, the focus group, and the public survey. There are some reoccurring themes throughout the process. The community felt that the parks are good, they're well-used, and they're very valued by the community. There's a couple parks, Oak Park, there's potential for maybe another use. It's right now, it's used as a practice facility for softball and baseball, and it's maybe just too small for that. It just doesn't have the space it needs, so maybe it would be better served as a community park for that area. And then the Conservation Club has been several times referred to as a diamond in the rough. I mean, there's a piece of property that has a lot of potential, and you do a lot of great things with it, and it just needs to be taken that next step to do that. And hopefully this plan will help sort of guide where that's going. There's concern over the condition and the maintenance of the facilities at the parks. There's need for park signage and wayfinding, not just where the parks are themselves, but what amenities are within the park, and how do you get to them, and what sort of activities can you do there? There's a concern about safety and vandalism in the parks, and that's very common. There's overwhelming support in all the groups we talked to about for youth baseball and softball, and the city is definitely making movement in that direction to resolve that issue. And then there's need for non-vehicular connectivity. How do we get people from the school to the park? How do we get them from Walmart to the park? How do we get them from the hospital to the parks? So how do we make the parks an integral part of that network? Okay, so we conducted a level of service analysis, and this process was put together by the National Recreation and Park Association, and they are not-for-profit, and basically what they collect information that's going on nationwide and even globally, what's going on with parks, and they set standards, and they're accepted throughout the United States as the standard. So they look at three types of level of service. There's acreage of parks based on your population, there's type of park based on your population, and there's service area based on the type of park. It's all going to make sense in a moment. All right, so level of service, looking at acreage. Hands down, you guys have this beat with that large Conservation Club piece of property. The acreage is based on population, and the national standard is 10 acres of park area per 1,000 people. Now, Linden exceeds this by 10 times for park area. You have about 580 acres of parks for about 5,400 people, which means 107 acres per 1,000 people, which is great, because there's so many communities that can't even come close to this. So you have so much potential in parkland. Okay, so that's the silver lining. Now the cloud. Okay, the second part of the level service analysis looks at park type. So this is the type of park based on your population. So how is your population growing? What is your, what are your demographics right now? Linden is below the recommended level of service for volleyball, baseball, and softball. Now remember, these are national standards. So as you can see in this, and maybe you can read it on the laptop there, it meets the standards for basketball, tennis, it meets the standards, and it exceeds the standards for golf and swimming, but volleyball, baseball, Little League, and softball, definitely below those standards. And this is really consistent with what we heard from talking with people, and then what we're seeing when we look at the numbers as well. All right, the third type of level of service analysis is looking at your service area. So this is based on what is an acceptable walking distance or driving distance for people to physically get themselves to a park to recreate in some way. So there is a limited number of walkable parks within the city, so there's a need for some more of those smaller parks. You can see Humphreys Park and Oak Grove Park are both considered smaller community or mini-parks, and so you're thinking someone would probably walk 10 minutes or 20 minutes to get to that park to go to the pool, or go to that park and maybe have a picnic or something like that. Phil Harris Golf Course, Conservation Club, and Sunset Park, these are all special-use parks. They're very unique, and so people would be willing to drive a half hour or an hour, so 25 to 50 miles, to participate in an activity at those parks. So it's a little map to show you here. The purple is the city of Linden boundaries. Oak Grove Park, you can see there's a buffer around that, a quarter-mile buffer, so you can expect that area to walk to that park or to get to that park. And then Humphreys Park has a little bit larger area. So you can see there's some areas that aren't served in the community. So this is a great goal that comes out of this planning process, is that maybe we need to add some more parks in those areas that aren't served. Well, I should add that there is a plan, there's a Liberty Park, which is on the south side of the city, which will be a small park, which will have probably that quarter-mile radius around it, so that'll be added. It's in the process right now, or being proposed. Then if you look at these special-use or more regional drawparks, so Linden is a little tiny purple spot in the middle there, you can see it right there, a small area. And then, so this is the large area, and this is just 25 miles, so think of this as only a half mile, a half-hour drive, so people could certainly come from further. So you've got a large area that you're drawing from to about Sunset Park, the Conservation Club, and the Phil Harris Golf Course. Okay, so the planning team got together, and we talked about priority projects. What we did is we took the information provided from strength, weakness, opportunities, and threats exercise from the planning team, and the focus group, we talked about what are the needs of the parks, what do you like, dislike, and what are those needs of the parks, and then there was the public survey, which we got, so about 370 responses back, which is a good number. We were pleased with the response, and the depth of the comments that we received as well, lots of handwritten suggestions and comments. So we got quite a few suggestions on potential park projects. So the planning team met, and they went through an exercise where we looked at all these 53 potential park projects, and they identified what are high priority, medium priority, and low priority, and they're all important. They just had to say, okay, what can we do as a high priority project? What can we do in five years? And then a medium priority, what can we do in 10 years? And a low priority, what can we do in a 25-year period? All right, so I'm just going to wrap up here and just give you some of those priority projects. So in Humphreys Park, there was a desire to add more restrooms, add more shade trees. There's large trees. As those start to die or decay, then the importance of adding additional shade trees so that you can keep that park a nice shady park, because that's definitely a draw. Update the playground equipment, update those basketball courts, retrofit the pool so that it's ADA, American Disability Act accessible, that's really important. And the Conservation Club, there right now, the trails that are there for the mountain bikers are fairly advanced, moderate to advanced users, so maybe add some ones that people like myself could use and not hurt themselves. And then maybe add different lengths of trails, and there's certainly a group there that's working on that, a group of volunteers. There's a great building there that has potential, so updating that building with restrooms and a working kitchen so that can be used for functions, and then improving generally overall maintenance, and this is more of a long-term goal. Again, at the Conservation Club, there's all those lakes out there. How about cleaning them up and stocking them so they could be used for fishing? Physically connect the Conservation Club to the city. I think Greg, that will probably help with potential funding if there is that physical connection. And then also maybe that linkage would help with getting that non-vehicular movement of people, and then also maybe make it feel like it's more part of the city. Adding a gate to restrict access, so that to reduce the safety issue and the vandalism issue. And then Sunset Park, this is a park that has been promoted in National Geographic as a SCUBA resource, so let's promote it as a weekend destination. Let's get different groups in here, and I mean, groups can use it now for training, but let's use it more for recreation. There's potential there. And then we talked about having a management group that could run the property, and the revenue generated could go into the city and fund, give you a general fund to help fund the parks, and then also to pay for that management group, whether it's private or public. It hasn't been resolved, but it's an idea out there. Adding signage. In the public survey, people went, Sunset Park, where is that? So there's a need for signage. And then expand those camping opportunities, because people do enjoy going camping, so let's provide more opportunities for them. Overall park system, again, a theme that came through all the meetings was the improving the American Disability Act compliance, making sure that the parks are accessible to all people of all mobility. Improve communication and coordination, so people using the park, they're not overbooking themselves, or, you know, there's better coordination between the different not-for-profit groups. More programmed activities, so really hitting the school-age kids, giving them activities to do, teaching them life skills. Adding signage, we talked about that. Creating a Friends of the Park, there is a great network of volunteers in this city, and so you have the foundation of a Friends of the Park. So this is a group that could really help, you know, drive a lot of the programs that you want to have in your parks. And then looking at, you know, a nearby community that has a successful park system, and then who are you visiting them, and talking to their park board, and saying, you know, so what works, what doesn't work, because you don't want to reinvent the wheel. You want to learn from what's worked for them. So that's a good exercise for the park board to undertake. And then new parks and facilities, again, the softball and baseball facility, it's been talked about quite a bit. It's definitely, progress is being made in that direction. Okay, so just wrapping it up, sustainable parks, there's definitely a movement nationwide for parks to be more sustainable. They can be fairly expensive to operate and maintain, so parks that promote environmental stewardship provide social benefits, so beyond being just a place for people to go and kick around a ball, or, you know, be part of nature, that they actually provide that connectivity or that glue that holds that community together. Reducing the operation and maintenance costs, so, you know, using different types of materials, maybe using types of grasses that don't require mow so much, native grasses that can withstand droughts so that we don't have to water gardens and things like that. And then the American Planning Association, this past year, I think in the spring, they put together a series of papers on a parks forum, and they looked at 11 different topics, and they looked way beyond parks for trees and grass, so that more traditional view of parks. They looked at the benefit of parks as an integral part of a healthy community, and they looked at parks for economic development, parks to reduce crime, parks to help children learn, it's just everything. It's a really great set of freaking papers, and those are all in the appendices. So our hope is, is that as you write grants to secure some more funds for the different programs you want to, you can pull from those, and I mean, the APA, American Planning Association, is a great resource for that. Okay, so the next steps. I keep saying the last slide. This is the last one, really. Okay, so, yeah, that's just around the corner. That's where we're done, just around the corner. The next steps, there's an interim draft right now that the planning team is reviewing, so any comments that are gathered from this evening, we'll incorporate those. We're going to distribute a full, complete draft to the planning team a week today, get a final draft to the Department of Natural Resources, their outdoor recreation group, the beginning of October, and then they assured us they would just take a couple weeks or a week to review it, and then hopefully local adoption the end of October. And that should put you in about line when your grant is about to expire, so I should be okay with that. All right, so now I just wondered if there's any additional comments or questions? I know I went through a lot of information, and you have a big agenda, but I don't want to, if you want to take my name and number, or email, and you want to send me something, you're more than welcome to do that, but I'll, I can field questions if you have one.
And there's a sign-in sheet going around. Please make sure you get an opportunity to sign that, sign-in sheet.
Does anybody have any questions or anything that they'd like to add for Sheila and the team to consider or work toward, any particular problems or ideas?
I think you've done a good job.
Good, thank you.
A lot better than all the last guy did.
I think it was a really good planning team. You guys did a great job. I'm just merely a facilitator.
Mary, this is a resolution that I have here for the approval of park plan. That way we can get that into IDM and turn it into OPRAs as well to get that process started. So I have two copies of the resolution here tonight. It basically says that the city of Linden has reviewed the process, included a study thoroughly, and is satisfied with the services performed, and then that you've received two documents, two copies of the documents. So I have those resolutions here tonight, and if we can pass those tonight, that would be fantastic, if it would help us with the process.
Do I have a motion?
Not political, close the public hearing, and then you can leave the park.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, if not, I'll close the public hearing at 7:25. Thanks for everyone attending.
Okay, now, do I have a motion to accept the resolution that has been put forward for the park plan? Do I have a second? What's going on?
Just let me move it off.
The water and wastewater projects, hopefully they've gotten a chance to go to them. Basically, it is going to allow the bond issues to be addressed and the financials to be addressed. Four of these projects that we approved.
I want to approve the resolution.
Which one? For water and wastewater, or do you?
You could run them both again.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Greg, you also have something that goes along with that?
You've got all of, you have to sign these.
Okay. Here's an additional resolution that needs to go in for your grant application on wastewater, and I've given two copies there to Patty. Basically, the resolution is authorizing the city of Linden to turn in the application for the wastewater treatment, and then is committing to local funds, which is $4,614,750, which is coming in the form of a SRF loan for those funds. And so there's a resolution that's there on Patty for that. I think go ahead and take that first, and then we'll do the latter part later.
Do I have a motion to pass the resolution? Second? All in favor? Greg, do you want to?
Yes, and if you would do three copies of that resolution, that way you guys could keep one original. Since the clerk treasurer's out right now, we need to use his signature on these grant applications, and so we're asking for the city to sign a letter that appoints David Sisk, an acting clerk treasurer, to be able to sign the documents for the CFF grant. And that's, you know, that's all we need him to do. I don't know whether you guys needed to sign other things for you guys, but basically we could allow him to do the signatures so that we can turn in the grant applications without having to go through mailing everything with Jack in South Carolina everywhere.
Do I have a motion to allow people to sign? Second? All in favor?
And we'll get the application turned in.
Okay, the next item on our agenda this evening is the Glenburn Home, and Marvin Abshire is here representing Glenburn Home on some issues that we need to resolve.
Thank you, everybody. My name is Marvin Abshire, and I am here representing Glenburn Home this evening. Glenburn needs your help and seeks your understanding. Over 25 years ago, Glenburn started building its duplexes, and they started building with duplexes in the port, what is now West End Avenue and South Park Avenue in northwest Linden. What was not understood at the time was that they actually built across the platte line of the platted South Park Avenue, a platted avenue that was never actually opened by the city or used, and a piece of property that does not interfere with the existing South Park Avenue that does flow through the property right now. Have no idea how or why that happened. You do have a road there, and so what we are asking tonight has nothing to do with the existing road. What we have asked to do is to have the council consider vacating that portion of the platted South Park Avenue, not the open and running avenue, but the land that was originally platted for the street, to vacate that, and then if you agree to vacate it, to consider granting to Glenburn Home a strip of ground created by that vacation that would go to the city. That strip is about 325 feet in length by 22 feet deep, because the platted street that we're asking to vacate is actually 44 feet wide. That's still going to leave some unused ground if you decide to do this, because that was originally platted as two streets separated by a 50-foot wide boulevard. If you look at the platte map of the original LT Dickinson's first edition to Linden, and each of you do have a copy of that, it looks like those of you who are looking at maps, if you look about two pages prior to the maps that we've got, I think you'll find a copy of the original platte. One more page back, Jerry. There is what appears to be an orange strip there with a yellow strip through it. That was the platted boulevard, and we, you'll see a yellow strip which is representative of the street that does exist there. What we are proposing to do as a kind of a thank you, I suppose, if you're willing to consider the vacation and the grant of the additional property to Glenburn, is to return to the next meeting with everything in proper order so that that boulevard or parkway that contains the existing street can be rededicated in full as a public way. We're not proposing to modify that property at Glenburn's expense. I can't do that. We don't expect you to do it either, but we do want to make sure that there's absolutely no question that you have a 50-foot public way consistent with West End Avenue, consistent with Center Avenue, that are on either end of this portion of the street, so that if you ever decided that you wanted to expand the street, you could, if you need extra space to run utilities through there. And as it lays right now, I wouldn't anticipate either one of those things happening, but you would have the space and the ability to do that, and we would like to help do that as a part of saying thank you and in exchange for your consideration in vacating the street. Now, we are required to make publication of notice. That publication was made on August 30th, at least 10 days prior to this meeting. I'd like to present a copy of that notice for mayor for record. Each of you already have a copy of the petition. Would ask first of all that you consider vacating the strip of ground described, and if you have any questions at this point, I'm ready to try to answer them.
Question?
Yes.
On the 50-foot wide strip that you're going to go, we have a 13-foot wide street now, correct?
Already existing within that 50-foot strip.
Yes. So if we vacate the property which had built a apartment complex with that now, then it will come out to the road and where's the other 27 or 37 feet going to come to for the even?
Alright.
Both sides of the road, south side of the road?
Both sides of the road. The existing road is only 13 feet wide. But in looking back at the original platte, there will be, let's see. Got to remember the math layout of it. There's about 13 feet or so on the north side of the existing road and about 26 feet, forgive me if I don't have the math exactly right, on the south side of the road. That are all a part of that original 50-foot boulevard. That 50-foot boulevard space is not going to be disturbed by the vacation of a street that we are proposing here. Quite to the contrary, it's going to be left open and intact. The street that exists that lays within that boulevard is going to remain open and intact. What we're actually proposing to do is take that entire boulevard, it's designated as a park space on the LT Dickinson platte. What we're proposing to do is take that entire boulevard space and rededicate it as a public street or public way. Not saying you have to expand the street, are from it. But just to make sure that you know that you've got that existing space as a public way to use it for those purposes should you ever wish to. Does that help answer the question?
Yes, it does in a way.
Alright.
And pardon that question here, because like a tale my city attorney mentioned too. We need to just fire it back to you, I guess, one question like you mentioned to us of what will be needed back to us to show that we have this?
By this, I assume you mean the dedication of the 50-foot strip?
Correct.
What I'm proposing to do is come back next month. I don't have all my i's dotted and t's crossed with respect to the documentation on the rededication as a public way. But you will actually have a document approved by your council, signed and then recorded at the recorder's office at the courthouse, clearly showing that that was rededicated as a public way. And Glenburn will undertake the expense both of preparing the documentation, paying me to be present to walk through that with you, and to make sure that that's recorded correctly. And then the originally reported document will be returned to your records.
My question?
Thank you.
So you need a motion to vacate a portion of the platted land?
It would be appropriate at this point.
I make a motion that we now vacate a portion of the platted land that Mr. Abshire has discussed.
Alright. I have two copies of a proposed ordinance consistent with what you've just done. Vacations are done by ordinance. I need each of your signatures on each copy of that. This is also set for Mr. Shelton's signature, unfortunately. So it sounds like I'll have to get his when I can. If I could go ahead and start that with you. Sign each.
David's supposed to sign the resolution on Parkland?
Ned, Marvin, do you need another motion relative to the 22 feet?
I do. That's where I was headed next. Waiting for that to circulate. I do have a proposed written resolution to document that if the council agrees to convey that 22-foot northern strip of what was just vacated over to Glenburn Home.
Just give me a call. We'll come get it.
Tomorrow? I can bring it Wednesday?
That's fantastic.
Okay. Sorry, Marvin.
And number those around your cell are going to be?
Very brief, yeah. The second part of my presentation is, as Mr. Cox indicated, is to request your consideration in conveying the 22 feet of the northern portion of the property just vacated. In other words, the top half, back to Glenburn Home. The problem as it exists is not completely cured by vacating the street. Right now, that 22 feet still runs through part of the living rooms and the garages of these duplexes. Again, conveying this property will not have any impact on the existing street and will leave a buffer area of additional land on either side of the street that is part of what we propose to rededicate. And I have a resolution for your signatures if there is a motion to permit conveyance. The resolution proposes to both grant the conveyance as a matter of assisting with clearing a title issue and also authorizing the mayor and the clerk treasurer to sign the conveyance on behalf of the city.
I second it.
Once again, I have two copies. Your signatures are all on the second page of this one. Only requires council members' signatures.
Is that the one you just passed? The thing you forgot to sign?
We'll check there. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much on behalf of Glenburn Home. We very much appreciate your assistance.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the draft to grant unball the ability to do, to be hired and reimbursed to do the rate studies and the building procedures, basic cost on wastewater. They will be requiring analysis for the rates of things. I think they pretty much explained this to us that one evening. But this is just the actual draft. Do I have a motion to allow them to go ahead with the rate studies and the fees and cost on the project?
Sure.
Second? All in favor? Next item is the salary ordinances. I've given all of you a copy and I think I've answered all of your questions. And I just think I've got any more discussion already? Any other issues that you need to have clarified?
Can I move to approve this salary? That's submitted?
Okay, do I have a second?
Okay, now which one?
The salary.
There's two.
Okay, the salary ordinance, the one he's got in front of him with the civil. And the utility. Well, the elected officials is.
I know, but it'll just be another.
But the elected officials is the separate one. I know. But the civil city and utilities is all one?
Yeah. He made a motion, I need a second.
Okay. Do I have a second?
This is for the elected.
No, this is for the, this is the first civil and. Civil and utility. Second? Okay, now everybody in favor? Any opposed? And there's no change at all in the ordinance for the elected officials? Any motion that they remain the same? Any motion to remain the same?
I'll say.
All in favor? The next person on the agenda this evening would be Jeff.
Thank you for having me on the agenda tonight. To refresh your memories, my name is Jeff Doris. I represent Semenay LLC that was formed about a year ago to fund some sort of a repurposed use for the Semenay Theater. Couple months ago, we brought to the council meeting a revitalization plan that was adopted. So I'm being sensible to that. We are now reaching another point in our redevelopment process where we are requesting of the Glenton City Council a resolution establishing an economic revitalization area and attendant to that property tax deduction, tax abatement. We have prepared for you some documents that will help to support our position. What you'll find is a spreadsheet that will outline what we project the property tax, the assessed valuation to be over the first 10 years of our property redevelopment. There's also state Form SB1 that will need to be filed in conjunction with the abatement request. The next document is the preliminary establishment of the economic revitalization area and the tax abatement resolution. And then the final document that you have in your packet is the form that would be approved following discussion at the next council meeting formally authorizing the property tax abatement. As it stands now, our intent is to develop the Semenay, former Semenay Theater and some adjacent properties into a senior housing complex containing between 45 and 50 renovated senior apartments. And now's the point at which I hand the dissertation over to Stan because I've exhausted everything in a comfortable setting.
Well, just to talk a little bit more about the development. Obviously, the city funded the estate of the Semenay property and the property around it a few years ago in the mid 2000s. And basically found no use for it other than what the renovated library is being used for currently. So we find that the development of roughly 45 senior housing units there is a good fit, it's good use for it. The Dorises have purchased the parking lot behind the Semenay. So there won't be any issues with on-street parking. We'll have a covered area there for drop-off and pickup. So, and obviously, because these are seniors, there won't be any additional load on the tools or anything like that. The, this particular abatement request is rather unusual. Obviously, you folks can approve any abatement up to 10 years in terms of, in terms of the term of the abatement. This is a 10-year abatement requested, but we're actually not requesting that there be any taxes abated until year six. So the development would pay the full boat property tax until year six. And this is allowed by a, by a change in the, in the state law regarding. Typically, as you know, the abatement's bill where there'll be a major percentage at the start, which will dwindle down eventually, so that the property will be paying full property tax in, after year 10 or about year 10. This one, this particular application means that we'll be paying the full property taxes through years one through five. Then there'll be a reduction, five through, or six through 10. And then after year 10, back to the full, back to the full property taxes. It's a bit unusual, but it's because of the nature of these developments. They, they start quite strong as far as, as far as the pro forma. They can support themselves. But once you get about five years in, there's a weakness through year 10. And so we try to correct that weakness so that the pro forma will show to the state housing authority that this is a good enough proposal to award housing tax credits to.
Maybe you have any questions that we might be able to answer?
We talked earlier, so.
I totally understand that. One of the things that you talked to me about was that you would be in no competition with any of the other companies or businesses. Do you want to talk a little about that?
Because of the limitations of the financing that we're pursuing with this, we can't develop any overtly commercial property in conjunction with the housing project. Our original hope or anticipation was that we would develop the upstairs portions of our Main Street properties as apartments and ground floor units as commercial or lease properties. But we found out not too long ago that that won't be a possibility. The limitations of our financing won't permit us to develop them as fully leasable commercial properties. So this abatement will not in any way compete with or put to a disadvantage any existing commercial properties at all.
So what are you going to do on the ground floor?
Well, the, and we had, the Dorises and we had a friendly disagreement. They wanted to see the commercial development on the bottom level. But, but these particular developments are, it's extremely difficult to do that. So what we decided to do, there's a number of uses in the senior development, starting with a beauty salon. We were going to have two laundries in development. There'll be a library with free internet access. There'll be a private game room. There'll be a health facility, a gym. So all these, all these uses, which by the way are restricted to the residents of the development. All these uses which, which have kind of a commercial flavor to them, we plan on putting them all in the storefronts so they'll actually have the appearance of commercial developments. They, again, they can't be used by, by people other than the residents of the senior community. But once again, if you look through the, as you walk by the, by the display windows, which we intend to keep everything installed, it will look just like, you know, there's a laundry mat, there's, you know, there's a health club, there's a beauty salon. a longer map, there's, you know, there's a health club, there's a beauty salon, so...
But it's just common usage for the residents.
Exactly, exactly.
Do you guys have any questions? Okay, so basically, if I understand you, you need us to pass the preliminary this evening and then the final a month from now. Is that correct?
Yep. Pass the preliminary that says that you will sit a hearing here, the final, and then it has to be published so that the final notice that if there's an objection, that they have to have a chance to come to the public hearing before the final passage. When that's covered in, is there one party called preliminary? I think it's actually called...
Preliminary resolution or establishment or...
It covers all that, what needs to be done before the final is heard next month.
Okay. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Sure.
All in favor? Motion passed. I do, however, have a problem with everybody signing this sheet of paper because there's a mistake on it, so it needs to be corrected. I would assume for you.
Okay.
It has presented to me as mayor, and then hashtag, and then presented to me as mayor, and there's me. So you need to reword this, and we need to sign a correct version, right?
Okay.
Do you see what I'm seeing? Do you see what I'm saying?
Mayor, I received this in my email, showing me a big change. If you receive this press address, I can go change it.
Yes, that would be, if that's wrong here, I might be able to.
I can get, I can get a few minutes.
Okay, go ahead and go on my computer, that's fine. All right. We will, we will sign this when it is ready done, and thank you, gentlemen. And then in October, after all of the necessary publications and things, we'll revisit it, and Linda will be presiding over that meeting, but I don't foresee any problems. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'd like to thank you for all you're doing.
Yes, it is, it's a wonderful thing, and Vicki, you also, I mean, you guys are awesome. So thank you for hearing enough about our city to do this for us. Okay. Department heads. I again can't see to the background, I'm trying, okay.
Do you have anything to report? We had a busy weekend, had several arrests this, last weekend, over just basically, it seemed like alcohol and manufacturing, some resisting law enforcement, some more arrests, things of that nature. Prior to that, been pretty quiet, and it's been fairly quiet since then, but had a busy weekend, so it's about all.
Anything coming up that we need to be aware of or anything?
No, we got the Operation Pullovers that'll be going on, you know, this fall, everybody loves, but the outside of that.
So you warned us all, right?
Was that?
So let it be known that you have warned us all.
Yeah, you duly warned about Operation Pullover. We are back in the school. We have started our seventh grade DARE program this year, which is a first year for that, so we are in the fifth and seventh grade in the schools now. So far, it's only about a week or so into it, but Carl seems to be very enthusiastic about it, seems to be real excited about it, said the kids, that majority of the kids are also attentive and paying attention and interested in what he got to say in the class. So that's going real well. We have had some complaints on buses, and not complaints on the buses, but people running bus arms. We're going to do the same things we did last year, we'll put an officer on school buses, and we'll have an unmarked car somewhere around that school bus, and there will be no brakes or warnings or whatever. If we catch someone running a bus arm, they will be cited, and it's a hefty fine, it's not your normal speeding fine, so. That's how that...
Okay, I'm probably going to be seeking permission from the school to have the children meet at city hall and walk to school on the National Walk to School Day, and I probably will need some of your help that day getting there safely, so, but I'll get back with you on that.
Yeah, we'll be more glad to help that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
If we have to, we'll get Jerry back in your car or something.
Okay. Gary?
I've just got a couple things. One, I'm going to try to start doing this at every council meeting, but just gives everybody an idea of how many runs that we make a month, because some of people don't understand what all we do, but just for the month of August, we made 85 runs. That includes medical runs, fire runs, alarms, public service assistance, that kind of thing, so I'm going to try to do that every month, kind of inform the council on how many runs that the fire departments actually make, so. The only other thing I have is next month, first of October is National Fire Week, so the fire department will be hosting a lot of the school kids and head start, some preschool kids will be coming up there next, next month, and we educate them all on fire prevention and all that is, all that material's paid for through donations through the local businesses here in the community. They donate the money for us to do that, so all the businesses donated it out, and I just want to say thanks for doing that so we can continue doing this. That's all I have for...
Thank you. We have anybody else back there?
That's it.
Okay, that completes everything on our agenda this evening.
Patty?
Well, the property that we have for sale, no, it's a lot, what are the plans for that?
We can't ask him, he's not up here. Do we have any comments? From anybody in the class? Jared?
I just wanted to say thank you for all the city's support for the music festival, which was Labor Day weekend. Had tremendous help from the electoral department, the street department, Billy at the park, so thank you for everything the city does for us. Had several thousand people out there, and already started on next year, so...
Thank you for what you do. That takes a lot of hard work, and I, I'm not sure everybody understands there's a year's work in that one weekend, but we appreciate what you do and bringing people in to our community.
Yes, and Jared, thank you very much. That's a wonderful thing for the city.
Yes. Thank you. Anybody else?
Make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?